Presentation on the Voices of Equity: Elevating Student Voices. Could we have Dr. Paula Stanton and her guests for their presentation, please?
Good evening, President Mueller, Vice President Sewell, Members of the Board, Superintendent Boston. It is my pleasure today to talk to you about Voices of Equity and look at all the gifts that I brought with me to share in the presentation about how we elevate student voice in Hartford County Public Schools. So I first want to say that Voices of Equity is student-created, student-led, student-approved, student-generated. It's all about our students. They wanted to make sure that it's understood that Voices of Equity is not a club, it is a movement. It is a movement to help our county be better. And so they created this mission statement that you see on the screen. They wanted to make sure that all students have a safe space to be who they are and all students have equitable outcomes and futures. And so all of the work that they do is in support of that mission. Voices of Equity started with one group at Hartford Tech who went to their then-principal, Mr. Collins, and said, "Hey, we have had some racial experiences here at our school. We've been bullied, we've had some things said to us that we know aren't quite right, sometimes by students, sometimes by staff, sometimes by the community." And what he said was, "I need to help my students." So he called me up and he said, "We need to get to work." It was actually my first day in this position and we started working with students then and we've been doing that for the last four years. But essentially what they were saying is, they didn't feel a sense of belonging at their school. And that's about us, that's work that we need to do to make sure that happens. So, we want to make sure that all of our students can bring their authentic selves to school, that they feel connected, that they feel accepted, and that's what we're all about. We have many Voices of Equity now. We started with that one group at Hartford Tech. And just like all good things, it's spread. And now we have 11 schools that are, that have Voices of Equity groups and counting. I want to just give a thank you to all of the principals of these schools and all of the sponsors who support the student groups. You'll see their names listed on the screen. Because they work with students. But more importantly, they allow them to give, they allow them to share, they allow them to work towards a better future for all of us. And so what I think is wonderful about this movement is that it's all about everyone, not just a particular group, but making sure that we all have that feeling of safety, that feeling of being welcomed in our spaces. It's about educating. So when the students came and said they've had some experiences, and these have happened across schools, from North Hartford and any other part of the county, Aberdeen, Edgewood, everywhere, what they said was, "We don't just want to complain about these experiences. We want to do something about it. We want to educate people about it so that it can get better." And so they started with doing some presentations for faculty and staff. They started doing some outreach to student groups. There was a student summit. They've done some socializing. So I want to share a little bit about some of the social activities they've done and then I'm going to be quiet so we can get to the good stuff. And that's the students. But they had a meet and greet back in April. It was called Meet and Greet with Sweets. And they came together to eat sweets, but also to talk about what's going on in our county. What are some things that are good? What are some things that we need to do better? What are some ways that we can take action? What are some ways that we can serve? What are some projects we can do? They also came together to support one another. So the table that you see at the top of the screen was the motivational quote table. They could give one and they could get one. So students came and wrote motivational quotes and when they needed that pickup, they went over to the table and got one too. Just a couple of weeks ago, they had a holiday mixer. They called it a Very V O E Holiday Mixer. It was also a social gathering. See, we had some sponsorship there. But they checked in on their school-based initiatives. They talked about future service projects, such as having a day of service for Dr. King's birthday in the future and also other projects. More importantly, they had fun. You know, a lot of times we get to see students competing against one another across schools, but how often do we get to see them reaching across those schools and saying, "Hey, what's it like living in your community? What have been your experiences? How can we make our entire district better?" And that's what they were doing. You may have noticed on that list, there were a couple of elementary schools. In elementary schools, their groups focus on kindness. How do we make sure that everyone is kind to students? So that everyone feels safe when they come to school. They celebrate one another's cultures because some of these things that are said to students happens, it starts in elementary school. How do we create a sense of belonging in elementary? So that by the time you get to middle school, you see less bullying, less harassment. You see more upstanders who say, "No, we don't, we don't do that here in Hartford County Public Schools. That's not what we're about." The last thing I'll say before I let the students speak is that they created this logo. Remember I said it was student-created, student-approved, student-generated, student-everything? Well, they created this logo. And I think this logo really embodies their message. Educate, not hate. So I'm going to pause and have some of our students share why they wanted to be in Voices of Equity and also how it has impacted our community. We're going to go straight down the line and then I'm going to ask you all to switch and you all come up front so that it can be a smooth process, I hope. Bear with us.
Hi, I'm Laney and I'm a senior at Aberdeen High School. And so I joined Voices of Equity because before I went to Aberdeen, I went to a smaller high school and it was with 29 different nations across the world. It was in Europe, so about the whole school was about 350 people. So that's a lot smaller than Aberdeen. But when I was there, we had hardly any issues. And when we did, the issues were solved so fast. Like, something would happen one day, the next day, we had an assembly about what not to do and how to handle those situations. Now at Aberdeen, we have a lot of issues and nothing is getting handled. And so Voices of Equity is helping with that. We go to Mr. Quigg, that's our principal. And he is very good and he just like steps in and he tries to help us as well. And for Voices of Equity, we use our voice to not just be heard, but also to be seen and make action. And we've been starting to do that, so yeah.
Hi, I'm Frida.
Hi, I'm Frida and I'm from Aberdeen High School and I'm a senior as well. And I chose to join Voe to support my school's efforts to address racism, promote diversity, and value individuality. I was free to address my school issues with my peers without fear because of Voe. I hope that this club would help our school community in becoming more welcoming and also accepting of newcomers. I long for a platform where my opinion can be taken seriously as a woman of color. And thanks to Voe, I was able to connect with other students and finally feel like a part of my school community.
Hi, my name is CJ Felth. I am sadly the only representative of Bel Air Middle School. I am in sixth grade. And I, this club means a lot to me. I joined in fifth grade and it really helped me develop goals that I wanted to achieve in the future. Voices of Equity for me is considered a safe place for students to speak their mind about issues they want fixed and to make a change about it. At school, I can see the Wakefield Elementary through my window in almost all of my classes and I think about those kids and I think about, "Well, what about them? What are they going to have to go through when they get old enough? And I want to solve those problems so those kids will never have to go through what I did." Most adults I know say that middle school was the worst experience of their life and I know a few of you felt the same way. But I feel that that shouldn't be happening. Us three years at school, one different school shouldn't be described as a horrible experience. And I want to change that experience. During meetings after school, we talk about racist and sexist treatment, bullying, and rights for transgender and disability, people with disabilities, and how to find ways to solve these problems. And I know what bullying feels like unfortunately and it can feel like you have been kicked in the gut. Voices of Equity is helping me make a change so nobody else will have to go through what I did. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maritza and I'm a senior at Bel Air High. I would like to start by thanking you all for having me here tonight. I want to share my experiences with you on why I wanted to join Voe and then my personal experiences that have resulted because of it. So I wanted to start by talking about my own background. So being a young Filipino girl in a white-dominated school system has always faced me with challenges. Just as a middle-schooler, I was exposed to various instances of racism. Many people my own age gave me a blank stare after I shared my ethnicity. Many people told me, "I don't even know what that is." And many people were shocked there was yet another type of Asian. Children claim their use of microaggressions and offensive stereotypes to be jokes, but the younger me in middle school did not understand why I was just so different from the rest. By the time that I got to high school, things had only gotten worse. People were using things such as slurs, instilling stereotypes into my mind, forcing slants in their eyes and chanting things that they definitely should not have been saying. Understanding that it could not have just been me, I decided to search for a club that was going to work to fix these injustices and do that by enacting change. Thankfully, I found Voices of Equity and this group focuses on fighting for the groups of individuals in our school who are underrepresented. By taking part in Voe with my peers, we are definitely making our schools better by creating a safe space and equitable outcomes for everybody. At Bel Air High School, we have personally discussed the need to end ableism in our schools and we plan to collaborate with Best Buddies in the spring. We spoke out against Asian hate resulting from the pandemic. As we all know, that's a big issue. And we celebrated and recognized various different Asian-American cultures in our school announcements. We have worked endlessly to fight the stereotypes and to reinvent the school environment into something more inclusive and celebratory for everyone. The most impactful event that I wanted to tell you guys about was our county-wide microaggression presentation. And virtually, me and a panel, including some of these wonderful individuals up here, we had a chance to talk to a lot of the admin throughout the county. And unfortunately, many of the staff claimed that they were unaware of all the harmful instances that were occurring involving microaggressions and things like that. But these pieces of feedback show how important groups like Voe are because we as people are not as educated as we can be. Everybody in this room, but also in this world, can learn from others and grow because of it. The need for minority advocacy is tremendous because without giving these groups the platforms they need to get their voices heard, they will continue to go unnoticed. If we all take more time to educate ourselves and listen to others, we can all grow together. I wanted to most importantly note that Voe has helped me find a sense of community and voice my own struggles, but even more importantly, has helped me develop my perspective holistically on the issues that are experienced by each and every minority group in my school. It has also allowed me to connect and celebrate with all of the wonderful and positive aspects of other people's cultures because I feel like sometimes we forget to celebrate these things too. I encourage everybody in this room tonight to do everything that you can to educate yourselves as well. Our differences in the characteristics of our identity that should be most, or the characteristics of our identity that should be most celebrated. Together, I know that we can all make this county a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Riley Cartosa and I'm a senior at Bel Air High School. I first joined Voices of Equity last year and I'm beyond grateful that I did. I've always been passionate about fighting against inequalities in this world and this club gave me a place to take action. Personally, I've experienced the struggle of a traumatic brain injury, which often is not discussed enough. The constant pain and mental struggle that this causes. Due to this, I've had multiple accommodations in a 504 plan. This is to help me, and 504 plans are meant to help people who have a disability or anything that requires them to need extra help. In my experience, getting a 504 was a struggle and I have had some wonderful teachers who went that extra mile, but there was also teachers who gave me pushback, who I would have to fight against constantly to get the accommodations that I need. I would have to explain why I need this and why I need extra help for the specific assignment, which often wasn't realized that my traumatic brain injury affects every aspect of my life. Being part of Voices of Equity helps give me back my voice that I so often find lost. Being part of Voices of Equity gives me people in my corner to help fight and so that I don't just give up and give in. Voices of Equity reminds me that I do not have to struggle alone in silence and that I deserve equality, but also equity. One thing that I want to speak about that I'm proud of that Voices of Equity has done is the productive conversations that we get to have. We are able to have open and honest discussions where we can ask questions and share our experiences. Recently, we have discussed the LGBTQ+ community. In this conversation, people share the pain, violence, and hate that they experience all day and every day. We plan to follow this up with an action meeting where we can try to find ways to help people in our school. We also plan to have more discussions about mental health and a discussion with a panel discussing disabilities within our school, hoping to better understand one another. And without these conversations, I would not have been able to grow as much and been able to understand other people's struggles. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Nguyen. I'm a member of Voices of Equity at Bel Air High School. I appreciate the platform that I am given today and I hope my statements that follow change the lives of my listeners. Frustrated, afraid, unseen, underrepresented, and unheard as a Black woman in this day and age, at the ripe age of 17 years old, is how high school made me feel. The lack of representation for teachers of color is unacceptable. The constant acceptance of racial slurs said by the majority at my high school is disgusting. And as I co-lead this year's Voices of Equity chapter, I cannot do this alone. Teachers must become true and effective allies to the Black community and people of color, using their voices aggressively and productively. However, my hope for a brighter tomorrow began during quarantine as Voices of Equity came along. Having these uncomfortable conversations, the same conversations many are too afraid to speak about, loosen personal bias and prejudices. We are breaking down the barriers that so many minority groups have up towards their own culture, hiding away from what makes them unique to their confines of their own home, hoping it won't get erased by the majority. We are educating each other on our own cultural, religious, and everyday lifestyles that makes us unique by inspiring and accepting the differences which fascinates this melting pot of a nation. This is what Voices of Equity taught me. I was once starving for acceptance, shunned by the laws of high school popularity, desperate to no longer be, desperate to no longer be burdened by the expectation of others, longing for a win but still dismissed. With all the efforts that were given when conformity was the strategy, rose-colored glasses were applied when trying to get a foot in the door. But once both feet landed, radical change was around the corner. Voices of Equity is a type of group where silence is not an option. Scream and shout, we must; yell and demand, we can; being forceful and vigorous, we will. Black as my skin is, I am most often ignored and dismissed by the majority that fears my magnificent potential. Black as my skin is, I am my ancestors' wildest dreams and most outstanding achievement. Skin color does not alter the content of one's character, therefore it is not a just examination of a human being's intentions. Voices taught me to feel strength in being me, that is why I lead. Black and as beautiful as my skin is, we must not wait for acceptance but demand inclusion. Therefore, I fight loudly and proudly to finish the work that my ancestors started. Thus, Voices of Equity taught me how to accept myself, being most times the only Black person within my classes, but still finding pride in that. I am fighting today for the growth and acceptance of a movement like Voices of Equity because of the children that I serve. The same kids I mentor of all different types of backgrounds, Black, White, LGBTQ, trans, all under the sun, come to me in tears after difficult discussions thanking me for my voice because my words and actions are all I can stand by. Now I'm just going to quickly go through two of the movements that I am most proud of being a part of Voices of Equity in Bel Air. This Friday, we are hosting an event where we are bringing together all different types of clubs, sports teams, et cetera, to celebrate each other. But most importantly, the goal of our mission in this Friday is for those groups in particular to bring issues to the table so hopefully Voices of Equity can be a catalyst for the change in their clubs and we can work together to not only celebrate, but make radical change. The second movement, which is what I'm most proud of being in Voices of Equity, is our trauma-informed education PowerPoint presentation we did to teachers during their professional development meeting after school last year. The biggest parts and what I'm most proud of is the testimonies that we're, that, that these kids gave. I consider myself a leader to these kids and I'm so proud of the vulnerability they showed. But most importantly, having this trauma-informed education meeting, it makes teachers more aware of the struggles of students and makes teachers realize that everything that happens in these students' home lives directly affects the quality of their academic success. As students spend a majority of their life in school, it is important that teachers and students' relationships are more than a business exchange. It is more than you do an assignment and I grade your paper. Teachers are molding the next generation of students and it's important that we get on the same page. I know a lot of my friends and colleagues do not have parent figures in their lives and raise their own siblings when they go home. So therefore, when they ask for an extension, it is important that teachers recognize that it is always more and you are always scratching the surface. It is important that teachers create a friendship so students can feel vulnerable when communicating with these teachers so they can become on one page, because oftentimes it is not. So I hope everyone considers what I discussed today and hopefully it can change your life in some way. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiomi Ton. I'm an 11th grade student at C. Milton Wright High School and the president of Voices of Equity there. I first learned about Voe through Ms. Meredith Health from working at the Office of Equity and Cultural Proficiency for their student summer program. At the time, I was very interested in the club because of its message. A movement of students and leaders who are committed to encouraging their community to become more fair and just. I realized that CMW did not have a Voe at the time, but a few months later, in January of last year, I overheard the morning announcements that there was going to be a first Voices of Equity meeting after school. That afternoon, I attended the very first meeting and was one out of the four students that attended. Today, the club has grown and has established a Voices of Equity board made up of five students and two co-sponsors, with also our members to be considered. At CMW, our Voe has focused on tackling underlying issues that has led our community to become unfair and unjustifiable. These topics have been microaggression, implicit bias, privileges, and most recently, we have done activity inspired by Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech, where students have written down their dream that advocated towards inclusivity, equity, and safety for our school community. For example, a student wrote, "I have a dream that all students are seen and heard," which I believe Voices of Equity is a step towards that dream. We are more than just a club. Again, we are a movement. We are here to give a platform for students and staff to advocate towards for the better of our future in our classrooms, in our schools, and most especially, in our community. Throughout every milestone we have passed, we will always look back to the people that have doubted Voe and we're wary of the establishment of a club at CMW. And we prove them wrong by encouraging a change in our school, community, without being forceful, but with graceful and eager to encourage others to acknowledge and learn for the better of not just theirs, but our community. It has been a great pleasure and a blessing to be placed in a position where I can be the beginning of a legacy that is being built by Voices of Equity here in the school system of Hartford County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sina Fiori. I'm a 7th grader at Southampton Middle School. And I feel the whole concept of Voices of Equity is a wonderful achievement of our schools, considering the changes that are able to be made. I think students taking charge and making change is really what is going to help our school system in the end, since the students are the ones who knows what's really going on day to day. Voices of Equity is where we make plans of action to change things, talk about issues and ways to fix them, use creativity to spread our message throughout the school, and really just learn to love yourself and others more. I joined Voices of Equity to share my differences with others and to learn from others and their differences. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adelaide Shelley. I'm a 7th grader at Southampton Middle School. I joined Voices of Equity because it helps to make our schools a better place and it gives us a place to talk about our lives, the good and bad parts. And it provides a safe space full of really amazing people. It's a great group to be a part of and we can all say that we've made connections and friendships with people in the club. And it's just an overall awesome group of people.
Hi, my name is Yaya Gremi and I am a Nigerian-American student that is a part of Voe. I wanted to join Voices of Equity for several reasons, but one of the main reasons was to be part of a community that felt safe and welcoming, especially with going to a school that made me feel as if I didn't belong and made me feel as if my issues weren't serious. It is great that clubs, that clubs such as Voices of Equity can create a safe space for students of color and LGBTQ students. This club impacts our school because they root for diversity and fairness for all students at North Hartford High School. They stand for what's right and make a difference in the school. They don't allow students of color to be hidden. They allow these students to shine. And I think that is very important when at a school, at a school just as North Hartford High School, it feels that students of color and LGBTQ students are often hidden and are not allowed to express their true identities. They don't allow, sorry. These clubs don't invalidate students of color's feelings and they find solutions to make us feel better. I'm very grateful to be a part of Voices of Equity and I'm very glad that this club helps us make a change for the better of our school. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shaiyan Montambo. Let me note, it's spelled S-H-A-I-A-N-N-E. Now, it wouldn't seem like I would get very many comments on that. And I apologize that I can't talk to everybody. If I could, I would turn my chair and sit right over there so I can see everybody, but I can't. I had experienced a lot of things growing up, being a mixed kid in a not-so-diverse world. Slow down. I, by the way, my name is spelled by my heritage, by my race, by what I'm mixed with. I've experienced an umbrella of different things, slurs, names, nicknames, being tripped, being hit, being kicked in the school system that I didn't even know there was problems in because nobody ever taught me that. I've always seen that, "Oh, you are to be bullied in middle school. That's you, it's your character development. It's the worst three years of your life." It's your, that's what everybody's told me. But as soon as I heard about Voices of Equity in high school, my junior year is when it started. I'm currently a senior in Fawston High School. My school had gotten a new principal last year, the year before, Mr. Collins. He came in, I'm sorry to drop names, but it's to be done. He had said, "Seen, heard, and valued." He put that quote everywhere, on the bottom of his email, had it on shirts, had it on posters. And I saw it and I didn't see it for just its words, but that's what the students of my community would see. Students of my community, dare I say, they live in a bubble, in that Fawston bubble. Right down the road from Fawston High School is where you cross into Bel Air. Not a lot of them know that. Not a lot of them know that. To have Voices of Equity in Fawston is a great way to show my, the students of my community, my peers, that they do live in a bubble, and it's okay to live that way, but to know that there's other things outside of that bubble. So because they know they live in this bubble, they feel safe. They can say whatever they want to say, good, bad, ugly, evil, whatever you want to say. And they do that. Some of the things they say are good, but outside of their bubble, they're never going to ever say anything nice, anything good. So having Voices of Equity, having seen, heard, and valued, it is to teach them what the words mean, not to just read the words. I take Voices of Equity as it's not to change the world at this point in time, but to change a moment, and if that moment is to sit in this room and have a conversation with somebody, the board, the public, my peers, if that's what's going to change their moment, then let's have it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Cook. I'm a freshman at Towson University, and I was the president of Voices of Equity at Beller High School, year 2021 to 2022. Depressed, angry, and anxious, I found myself staring at my reflection in my mirror as a rampant amount of tears cascaded down my face. This was the day I faced a hate crime. I was 14, and the incident only happened three months into my freshman year of high school. In my biology class, a young man who had been bullying me since school had started went behind my chair while I was doing my work and cut off a piece of my hair, like a piece of my hair. After this, he called me the N-word as other students laughed about what he had done. Facing this was no culture shock to me. I've had paper balls thrown at my hair, and I would have peers call my skin dirty and ugly at the age of 10. Even recently, in my junior and senior year of high school, people would gossip about me because they didn't understand why a black girl could have so many accolades. I represent, underrepresented group of people who have had to face some of the same experiences I described. I can candidly say that the catalyst to the personal acceptance within myself and within the minds of others has come from joining Voices of Equity. I was encouraged to share my experiences and my relationship with discrimination, but specifically racism. I've had the pleasure to speak to a multitude of different students and teachers throughout Heford County. This added to my confidence. Some topics we've educated people on, and Voices of Equity has included implicit bias, gender identity, microaggressions, and mental health. Our group has the power to make people way more aware of these topics and the current acts of discrimination that happen within our schools. With this being said, I've also seen healing happen within the same community that tried to put people who were like me down. Even now, as a freshman at Towson University, despite all the amazing opportunities and healing Voices of Equity has given me, I still find so much room to have animosity towards myself for things such as my hair, the color of my skin, and my weight. These feelings are not foreign to me, they're just absolutely unwanted and unwarranted. I've learned that these self-imposed ideologies and this literal self-hatred I face is a direct result from all the discrimination I faced when I was younger, when there wasn't a Voices of Equity. I would like to finalize my thoughts by saying that we've been taught, and we continue to teach ourselves that we are very different from, from one another when we're not, because what if it happened to me was something that your younger self had to deal with? In fact, what if your child had experienced what I experienced, a hate crime at 14, or the slurs, the names that any of us had to experience, experience? When you want there to be a group of people that they could talk to about this, that's Voices of Equity for you. This group aids in situations like I've described and much more. All it takes is for the color of your skin to be different, or for you to follow a different faith, or for you to have mental health issues, or for you to have a different preference for who you love, or for you to come from a different country. I could go on and on and on and on. These issues that all of us have discussed will not change, and they will in fact worsen if they are not addressed, and even if, even if it's incrementally done, even if it's incrementally done, it just has to change, because again, these things will worsen, and I've seen it worsen. But again, luckily, we had Voices of Equity come in, and that really was my superhero, and it's inspired me to become a public speaking major at Towson University. I'm a communications major, and one day I want to be a social relations specialist to represent people like Dr. Stanton does and get paid hopefully good money. But in order to make a difference and to apply equitable outcomes for everyone, especially younger people. So yeah, thank you.
Did I deliver the gifts? I think I did. So at this point, I will pause. I want to thank you all for sharing your voices. We need to hear from you, because a lot of times the adult voices can be loud and can sort of overpower you, but you are the ones who are in our schools. You know what's happening. You know what you need, and I really appreciate the fact that you are here to share that and continue to share that, continue to hold us accountable for doing the right thing by you, because we will. So I'll pause and see if anyone on the board has any questions.
I'd like to start. First of all, thank you all for coming out. I see some familiar faces. I'm so glad that everyone was able to make it. Thank you for your honesty, your openness, sharing these stories of harassment and bullying can, it's never easy. I'd like to invite you guys to continue to come to meetings and continue to speak, even if it's not a board meeting. Go wherever you go, end up for college or life, keep using your voice. It's your best asset. With that, all of you have been here since 6:30 and listened to the public comments from every single angle, and I'd like to just applaud your composure while people have made comments about minority groups and, you know, other people have made comments pro-minority groups and anti, and what have you, and every single person was so calm and collected. I keep my eye on the audience the entire time, and all of you kept your composure. And then come out here and talk about equality and equity, and it's, you guys can do a lot more than a lot of adults can, so thank you. I'm very impressed and I'm proud of our students. I hope that, you know, four years from now, we're growing this, so thank you, guys.
Actually, Ms. Alvarez?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that I think it's, it's wonderful that you guys have found each, each other in Voices of Equity. I think it's very important to have others just to, to talk to, that you feel connected with. That's a, that's a skill and, and something that you can take forward, put in your toolbox to help your mental health throughout your life. On the other side, I'd like to caution you that you can't expect everybody to accept and accept you or to like you, you know, and that's their, that's their fault, that's their problem.
Yes, I applaud you, young people, because I know what it is, having come from the same thing when I was younger, and more importantly, in the 60s, you know, I went to a black-white encounter group to talk to other people who were, you know, different than I was, and to look at my own prejudices that I had. So I applaud you, but it helped, it helped me in my career and understanding the cultures, and I encourage adults to do that now in this time when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
I know it's not easy to come up here and talk, so good job for all of you guys coming here and doing that, and it's, it's quite difficult to stand up and be brave and do that, so thank you, guys, all for coming out and speaking, and I appreciate that.
You all are amazing. Thank you for your bravery, your courage, the audacity to speak your truth. I hear you. I see you, and in many ways, I am you. I so respect what you have shared in this place today. You've truly made this, this space a brave space, because spaces may not always be safe, as we know, but when you step into the room, you make it a brave space when you share your truth. So I love you and I value you for that. You have enriched our lives. Thank you.
Mom, I'm speechless, but you are awesome, all of you. What you've told us, what you're feeling, and what you brought across to us was just amazing, and I know that all of you will go on to do more amazing things, and I'm really glad to meet all of you. Thank you for coming.
First of all, the, the eloquence of your speeches were tremendous. You all are extremely well-spoken, from the oldest of the group to the youngest of the group. No, not you, Paula. By the way, as an endocrinologist, that meet, greet, and sweets, that's got to go. We can come up with better choices. No, the, the, the way that you all came across was just absolutely awesome. I'm so proud to be a part of an organization that can bring groups of individuals like you to the forefront, who are willing to sit in a group like this, where there may be some, as Ms. Alvarez said, maybe some people who are not quite on board, okay? But there is a lot of hatred in this, for a variety of reasons. The change is not going to start with my generation. We're, we're, we're beyond that. It's, minds have been made up, they're not going to change in the 70 and 60-plus age group. It's going to start with you, and a movement like yours is the beginning of something I can see, I mean, I can see this exploding all over the state, and maybe this is something that can put Maryland in the forefront in terms of looking to see how we can start at this age group, getting people to recognize that as different as we are, we're all the same, you know, we're all individuals, we're all people. I come from a profession where we're colorblind, nationality-blind, religion-blind, you know, we don't, we don't discriminate what patients we take care of. Anybody who walks through the door, we take care of them, and that's really what life is all about. We all want to be treated equally, and I think you all are the base, the groundwork of, of an organization that hopefully will gain a lot more traction and continue to make Heford County proud of our students. Thank you.
Oh, very redundant, but I was so inspired by each and every one of your stories. The uniqueness of each one of you is, is your beauty, and shame on us as a society for not recognizing that, and bravo to you for recognizing it in yourselves, and if Voices of Equity has done this for you, what a wonderful thing. I'm disappointed to say that it really doesn't go away, and that we're really counting, you know, like Dr. Phillips says, to change things. I personally have been bullied my whole life, and I most recently have been bullied in my job, and it just doesn't go away, unfortunately, but what I did, and I know what you will continue to do, is really what a Dr. Harold said, is speak your truth, stand for yourself. You don't have to be negative, you don't have to be aggressive, but there is a process out there that will let us be heard, and I had a very positive outcome, and mine's just a small smidgen of what you face every day and what you're going to continue to try to change in the world around us, and I just really applaud you, because I can't emphasize enough how inspired I was by each one of your stories, and I just want to say bravo. Thank you.
Oh, you have anything else?
That's it?
Okay, great. So, I am so proud, so proud of all of you for what you're doing every day, for coming here and speaking to us. I think many people don't know the racism, the bullying that actually occurs in our communities, and it's so important that you came here to tell us about that. It needs to be brought to light. People need to understand it. They need to understand that this actually happens, because, you know, I definitely hear it from, from people that they, they don't, they don't believe it happens. So I want to thank you so much for what you're doing in your communities. Paula, how do we grow this? I, I was looking at the list of, of schools that this program is in, and there, there were a few missing.
So we have a lot of schools that have asked for support around how to start their Voices of Equity at their schools, but one of the ways we grow it is by what we did tonight, by sharing that with you all, and then also schools. We have meetings where we invite schools to just come and see what it's about, so I think that's how we grow it. But our outreach with administrators in central office and in schools has been the way that we've grown it so far, and it'll, it'll continue to grow. I think we will eventually have a Voices of Equity group in every school, and I will say, there are some other schools that have groups that are similar, they're just not called Voices of Equity. For example, Edgewood Middle School has Good Trouble. There are a few schools that have other groups that, you know, they go by different names, so we're working to figure out how we combine efforts, because this group is really an umbrella group. We focus on all students, not just based on race, not just based on disability or ability status, but we focus on all, all aspects of equity. So we're working on how we can ensure that every school has that safe and brave space.
Thank you. Thank you again. Really appreciate all of you.
Thanks for having us.
Dr. Mueller, Dr. Mueller is, is last.
Thanks. I was just, I was going to make sure you didn't forget me. I really appreciate each and every one of you. I've listened to you, I watched you tell your stories. The amount of bravery it takes to be a public speaker is amazing, and to be a public speaker on a subject where you're vulnerable is even more impressive, so I appreciate each and every one of you. I admire Paula and the work that she's done, Dr. Stanton, the, the things that you've done in helping get these students organized has been amazing, and in supporting them in what they're doing. So thank you again, and I really appreciate you, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there to see you in person. Thank.
Thank you.
Great, and Dr. Bolson?
And I wanted to say something also, so again, thank you, as everyone else has said. I saw this as a presentation about students empowering students, and, and I actually sort of gently take issue with Mr. Sewell's question about how we grow this, because immediately seized up a list as a "we don't." This works because you grow this. This, what was most impressive, what I heard about this presentation, was just the fact that you at all identified this as a movement, not a club, and so I, I think frankly, the best thing we can do is stay out of their way. No, again, that being said, I know how much work Dr. Stanton puts in to making sure she can clear that path for people, so maybe that, that's the way we do it, but we're relying on you to do this. I have tremendous confidence, I've said this at other board meetings, I think I have tremendous confidence in this generation and the work you do, and I see the way you treat each other, and I hear the stories about the not-so-great treatments, but I think what you're doing is, is the way to move us forward, and, and frankly, not allowing some of us, the adults, to, to mess it up for you. And so we will keep learning from you. Thank you for sharing your experiences and your lived realities this evening, and thank you. I mean, our goal in this district really is to evolve to the place where students are leading the learning, and you're modeling that, and so you, you can help us take that farther as well. So again, thank you so much for your presentation this evening.
Actually, why don't we, at this time, before Katie comes up, the last presentation, but it's been two and a half hours, I'm thinking a few of us might need to buy